I'll call this meeting the Alexander County Board of Commissioners into session at this time. This is the 12th day of October 2020, and at this time, we will have the invocation. Will be given by myself, Vice Chairman Larry Yoder, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be given by... Which one of you want to do it?
I got it.
Commissioner Peele will give the Pledge of Allegiance. If y'all would please stand. Our kind and most gracious that we've come before thee today. We ask thy blessings upon this country and this world. We'd ask you to be with those folks who have been sick and have... Those that have passed on. We'd ask you to be with our first responders, those people who are in the first front lines of the pandemic. Be with them to keep them safe and out of harm's way. Be it the loved ones that have... That have lost loved ones. We'd ask you to be with our emergency service personnel, our law enforcement, and look after the state, our counties, and look after our world as we try to find a way to come together in peace and happiness with learning how to respect and to love and to care for one another, that the remembering that this world was built on love and not hate. Respect is the word, for we ask this in thy name. Amen.
You would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. At this time, I believe that we have a special recognition, and at this time, I'd call on Commissioner Ronnie Reese, who will make the presentation to Mr. Lenny Rogers, Alexander County Extension Director. Mr. Reese?
Lenny, if you'd go on then. I'll just read a little bit. It'd be... We'd be here all night if I told everything that Lenny's done and been involved in, but Lenny Rogers was hired as the Alexander County Extension Director in January 1995. Since that time, he's been busy helping farmers, homeowners, and citizens alike to identify and solve problems, produce quality crops, be successful in your outdoor hobbies and businesses, in an effort to educate the public on various agriculture topics. Lenny has taught numerous classes over the years, such as Master Gardeners, beekeeping, and pesticides. He's been featured in a variety of instructional videos on the government channel and on YouTube, and is often seen at our local elementary schools. Lenny is very community-minded. He was instrumental in creating the county's Community Garden Project and heads up the annual farmers market each year. In 2012, he also took on the use of organizing the annual Christmas parade and has volunteered each year since. Lenny has provided great service for the last almost 26 years and will be hard to replace, and we wish you the best of luck and be a great loss for the county, and I appreciate what you've done on behalf of all the commissioners and the county manager. And if you'll step on up, I got a little plaque here to present.
Do you got anything you want to say?
Never turn down the opportunity, right? I just want to say I truly appreciate it. It's been an honor to serve the citizens of Alexander County for over 25 years, and it's been a joy to come to work every day and help people that won't help in the field of agriculture and horticulture and all that. And I just... I just thank you. Worked with great people, great staff, and just throughout the years, and I just thank you so much. Not many people are as blessed as I am. Thank you.
Thanks again, Lenny.
I'll read what it says here on the key. "Alexander County Board of Commissioners hereby presents this key to the county upon Lenny Rogers in recognition of 26 years of dedicated service as Alexander County Extension Director presented October the 12th, 2020, and you'll be greatly missed." I'm sure I can... Let's picture, and then bring the rest of your crowd around too, so you got something with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Would it be better if y'all come up here to the front to get everybody in?
I just want to introduce my group. I've got Ben. He's my son. He's BLET. Looks like he's going to work for the Hickory Police Department. Hannah's from Washington DC. She came down. She's my middle daughter. Elena, my wife, and my mother, Mary. Glad they're here with me.
Lenny, we really appreciate what you've done, and I've enjoyed working with you over the years. You've been missed, but you get a Christmas every month now on the 25th.
That's right. I'm still responsible for getting the Christmas tree even though I'm retired.
We know where you live. You know? That's right.
Lenny, I was almost saying, I think you've done an outstanding job for the citizens of this county, and it's really great to see your mom here tonight to be here with you. That is fantastic. You know, the family, I think, your entire family, as long as I've known each and every one of you, have been involved one way or the other in community service, and now your children are starting to follow that same footsteps, and you can be big commended on the job well done. Very good. Thank you. Does any commissioner have a report that they'd like to make tonight?
Yes, sir. I was at the library board just a little while ago, and the library will resume regular opening tomorrow. Well, not regular, 10 people at a time. They will still be doing the online services as well as the curbside services, so the library will be opening for the general public tomorrow.
Very good. Anyone else? I think this is the first time in several months that we've not had an opening somewhere, and it's been a while, so... Even though it's very quiet on that area, it's still great to know the number of businesses that we've had that have been opening up. Gentlemen, our agenda tonight, item number six, the PowerPoint presentation, number eight, I'm sorry, excuse me, number eight, that will not be... I'd make a motion that we approve the agenda with the exception of item number eight, which will be tabled to another time.
Make a motion to approve agenda with the removal as stated.
Motion's made, there's second.
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. And I'd also like to say that Chairman Mayberry was not able to be with us tonight. He had a incident that came up that he needed to make sure that he was at home for, and so he will not be with us tonight. The first item on the agenda is public comment, and I don't think we have anyone for public comment except for one that is to be read by our clerk.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Craig McLeod, and once again, the McLeod family asks the Commissioners for help to enforce Alexander County codes and ordinances on the Ridley Ranch Road property owners in violation. The first request was 13 months ago in September 2019. The Webster and Drum properties have many violations, including household garbage bags scattered around the property, stacked on junk vehicles, and out of reach of the dogs running loose, junk vehicles and various pieces with no inspection stickers or tags, junk and rotting RV trailers, house trailer frames, and miscellaneous junk about the property. There are also a number of vicious unlicensed or tagged dogs that refuse to let the McLeod's, other property owners, and realtors exit their vehicles to inspect properties. Perhaps yourself or the county would please buy us out. None of this appears on the Alexander County websites, nor the tourism sites for this jewel of a county in North Carolina. The list goes on and on, and this has sounded like a broken record for the last 13 months, but these items need immediate attention by your departments. When exactly will a code enforcement officer respond and start getting some results? Why is planning and development not attacking such issues? I have repeatedly asked to be updated of your action on these matters. Nothing happens. I have not received an update since the 1st of 2020. You and your departments are charged with taking care of such matters. As property owners, our taxes pay for this service from Alexander County. Someone in this county has put these rules in place, page after page, on the county website. Why are you not... Why are you stalling? To my knowledge, as of late, no certified letters have been sent out on these issues. No site visits have taken place, and nothing has been accomplished. If I am wrong, simply update the McLeod's as to this Commission's actions. These meetings are pretty one-sided. The easy way out is to state your business at this meeting, but we don't answer questions. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number two on the agenda is a public hearing. Approval of road names, Butte Drive, Patriot Drive, and Ray Ritchie Lane. Mr. Rick French, County Manager, and this is a public hearing. I entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Make a motion. We open the public hearing for approval of road names, Bow Drive, Patriot Drive, and Ray Ritchie Lane.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, say raise your right hand. All opposed likewise. Thank you very much, Mr. French, County Manager.
Well, actually, you've done the work. You've read the new names. Staff requests approval, and the names meet regulations as required.
Very good. Thank you, sir. As this is a public hearing, anyone that is here that would like to speak in favor of or against this item that's involved here tonight in this public hearing, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Any commissioner? I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion. We close public hearing in regards to Bow Drive, Patriot Drive, and Ray Ritchie Lane.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Is there any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Gentlemen, I entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to approve road names as stated.
A second.
Second.
If a motion made, and second, any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number three, public hearing, conditional use permit 20-1 rural business slash Harrington, South Harris will be the zoning administrator. And item number four is also a public hearing. It's under the conditional use permit 20-2 shooting range and skeet field, Gray. And it's also going to be administered by Gray. I'm going to read some information here that you need to know about both of these items, and then we will... We will address each item as individuals, but I'm going to read this information so that each and every one of you will understand. The following two agenda items are conditional use permits. Application under 20-1 for lawn mower sales business and application under 20-2 is for a skeet field. The Alexander County Titleable Zoning Ordinance requires that all conditional use permits be brought before the Alexander County Commissioners for approval. The Board is required to conduct this hearing in a quasi-judicial manner. That means it is like a court hearing. State law sets specific procedures and rules concerning how this Board must make its decisions. These rules are different from other types of land use decisions like rezoning cases. The Board's discretion is limited, and its decision must be based upon competent material and substantial evidence in the record. A quasi-judicial decision is not a popularity contest. It is a decision constrained by the standards and the ordinance and based on facts presented. If you will be speaking as a witness, please focus on the facts and standards, not personal preferences or opinions. All persons wishing to speak before the Board must be sworn in and must present factual evidence relative to the case being considered. All parties must state their name and address for the record. The Board understands there are many in the audience who have opinions about the proposed uses. However, the Board cannot consider opinions or hearsay during this proceeding. The Board also asks that you avoid presenting repetitious testimony and evidence. State law outlines who has standing to appeal quasi-judicial matters before the courts. The guidance may also be used to determine who has standing during this hearing. The following have a standing as a party. A person with a legal interest in the subject property. This includes persons with ownership, lease agreements, options to purchase, and those with legal easements, restrictions, and covenants. The applicant, a person who will suffer damages as a result of the Board's decision. An association organized to promote the interest of a particular area, so long as at least one member of the association would have individual standing, and the organization was not created to address the particular issue. A person claiming standing must make a credible allegation of special damages. At that point, this Board must make a finding as to whether or not individuals suffer special damages. If you are a property owner who received notice of these proceedings from the Alexander County Planning and Development Office, then it is presumed you have standing. At this time, the clerk of the Board will administer oath for all individuals who intend to provide testimony, including staff members. And this will adhere to the first case that we have, the conditional use permit 20-1, and all Commissioners will be sworn in, as all the other folks will be also. So is there anyone here that is going to be testifying or saying anything during this hearing? If so, please come forward and be sworn in. Our clerk will take care of that, so.
You're good. Okay, good. Anybody else?
Is this all?
Just raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this manner is the whole truth?
I do.
Okay, good to go.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Good evening, gentlemen. The first case you have before you tonight is conditional use permit 20-1 for a rural business. Now, some of you may have not seen a rural business, or if you have, it's been a while.
Seth, if you don't mind, sir?
Yes.
Before you start off, would you please state your name and also your position with the county in this matter? Okay, please?
Yes, sir. I am Seth Harris, and I'm the zoning administrator for Alexander County. Okay, so rural business, our zoning ordinance does allow businesses in rural areas in the county with conditional approval from the Commissioners, so that's why this is before you tonight. Roland Harrington has proposed a lawn mower sales business located on Rocky Springs Road at the end of York Institute. You can see on the map on the screen up there. The property consists of .42 acres. The existing land use is a vacant building, but it used to be a church, and before that it was a gas station. All surrounding zoning districts are RA 20, which is residential agricultural, and that is also all the uses surrounding that are similar uses. So Roland Harrington has applied for a rural business conditional use permit for a property located at the intersection of Rocky Springs Road and York Institute Road. He proposes a lawn mower sales business. He proposes using an existing building and constructing one additional building on the property. As I said before, the existing building was used as a church, and prior to the adoption of countywide zoning in 2001, the building was used for commercial purposes. So the lawnmower business that he's applied for is an allowable use in the RA 20 zoning district with the approved conditional use permit. That use has to meet the criteria and the attached rural business criteria, which is in your packet tonight. So the Board does have the authority to impose additional reasonable conditions if deemed necessary. Per our usual practice, letters were sent by first-class mail, a sign was posted at the property, and a legal advertisement was placed in the Tazewell Times to announce the public hearing. So based on submitted site plans, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit, with the understanding that all the conditions listed in section 154.14.0.6, which again is attached, are met, and with the additional conditions that the proposed accessory building must be 15 feet from property lines. The owner will apply for a driveway permit from the DOT if necessary, since it is a commercial use, and the hours of operation will be limited to first shift hours. Also, deliveries will be limited to daytime hours. So some questions for the Board to consider tonight in this case. First, does the use meet the requirements set forth in the rural business section of the Alexander County Zoning Ordinance? Second, the use for which the conditional use permit is sought will not adversely affect the health or safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use? Third, the proposed use will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to property or public improvements in the neighborhood. Do I have any questions?
At this time, gentlemen, I need to ask for a motion to open this public hearing. I failed to do so. So I'd ask for a motion to open the public hearing as it appears on for application conditional use permit 20-1, please.
I make a recommendation we open a public hearing, conditional use permit 20-1.
Second.
Rural Business Harrington.
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Can I, sir?
Is applicant here tonight to answer any questions, maybe? Okay. Does anybody have any questions for me?
This used to be a commercial building to start with, or was it a church?
It was a church in the last 10 or 15 years, and before that, I've been told it was a gas station. I'm not familiar with the area.
It was a service station.
Okay.
Yes, it was a convenience-type store service station, and it was there... I know it was there in the 70s whenever I first came here, and it was... It was commercial use at that time. So I do know that.
And it appears to be an older building, so it's apparently been there for a while.
It's been there a while. It's a little older.
Yeah.
Yes.
Has there been any response from any of the surrounding?
There has been none.
Nothing negative?
No.
Okay.
And the applicant does live nearby. He actually is inheriting this property in the one to the west, and he lives to the east right past Lee Harrington Road.
Okay, thanks.
Is there any... Well, I mean, if he lives to the west, and there's only one tract of land between him and his other property, then, you know, and you didn't hear anything from the other property owners, correct? Is that what we're saying?
Correct, yes, sir.
I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there anyone from the public that's here to speak on this behalf of this conditional use permit? Okay. All right. At this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing for 20-1.
Make a motion to close public hearing on conditional use permit 20-1.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Is there any discussion? If not, I entertain a motion.
I entertain a motion to approve the conditional use permit 20-1 rural business Harrington as it seems certainly compliant in the areas of our consideration.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your hand. All those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is, we've all been sworn, and the next item is conditional use permit 20-2, public hearing, Mr. Seth Harris, and I'll remind each one that we all have already been there, and I entertain a motion to open the public hearing at this time.
Make a motion to open public hearing for conditional use permit 20-2 regarding gray area landowners.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made, and second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Mr. Harris, if you'd tell who you are and everything as you open up this hearing.
Yes, sir. I'm Seth Harris, the zoning administrator for Alexander County, and this is conditional use permit 20-2 for a shooting range, more specifically a skeet shooting field. The applicant is Gray Area Land LLC, and they also own the property. And the representative, who I believe is here tonight, Jimmy Gray, can answer any questions when we get to that point. The property is located on Payne's Dairy Road near the intersection with Carl Fox Road. The entire property, which is outlined in blue on the screen up there, is 254.7 acres. However, the subject area is a six-acre skeet shooting field, which you can see in the lower left-hand corner of the property there. The current use is vacant. It is used for timber harvesting currently, and they have recently harvested quite a bit of the timber, so pretty much all the green you see there on the eastern half of the property is not there. So it is open area around the skeet shooting field and beyond that. So zoning districts include RA 20 to the north, to the south is light industrial and heavy industrial, which is the county landfill, also RA 20 there, and then all the other surrounding uses are residential or agricultural or vacant property. So Gray Area Land LLC has applied for a conditional use permit to operate a skeet shooting range on the six-acre portion of this large tract. The applicant has indicated that the skeet shooting range will be a private club and not open to the general public. So a skeet shooting range is an allowable use in the RA 20 zoning district with an approved conditional use permit, subject to the conditions outlined in Alexander County Zoning Ordinance, the firing and shooting range section, which is attached in your packet tonight. The Board has the authority to oppose additional reasonable conditions it deems necessary. Again, per our usual practice, letters were sent by first-class mail, a sign was posted at the property, and a legal ad was placed in the Tazewell Times to announce the public hearing. We did receive several calls, I would say six calls. We had two that were in favor. One gentleman had some concerns, mainly noise and how it would affect his property. Some... Another adjacent property owner had some concerns about the noise, and the rest were just general questions. And you can see the site plan on the screen again up there, to give you an idea of where we're talking about. So the nearest, if you look to the south of the white blob there, which is a skeet shooting field, it's approximately 800 feet to the property line of the property that the county owns, and that's about 1,000 feet to the weigh station there at the landfill, to give you some idea of scale on that picture. So staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit as long as it does meet the conditions in the tactical training center and firing and shooting range section of the zoning ordinance, and with these additional conditions. The skeet shooting range must utilize steel shot and not use lead-based ammunition. Entire field and shotfall area must be located 300 feet from all exterior property lines. The land around the shooting field must be replanted in trees. 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM operating hours, no artificial lighting shall be permitted, and that is... You all can place additional conditions on that, such as the days that it's operating to. I would say that's a reasonable condition to be placed on this, and that's something that was suggested for a previous firing range that came before you previously. And then it shall be limited to shotguns only. No small bore or full bore rifles or pistols shall be permitted. So we have these same questions as we had before. Does it meet the requirements set forth in the shooting range portion of the zoning ordinance? Will it adversely affect the health or safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use? And will it be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to property or public improvements in the neighborhood? Anybody have any questions for me?
Mr. Harris, just have one. Looking at that picture, I think it's number 1474. What property is there? Is that a residence or just...
If you go back to the aerial view, and there's some chicken houses just south of there. I believe it is a single one that's located there, yes.
Okay.
And one of the concerned property owners own the property where the poultry houses are there, the old poultry houses? So I want to read a little bit more of this description on the applicant. So I want to read a little bit more of this description of the application for the record. So the applicant indicated that the skeet field would consist of two small buildings, a gravel parking area, and a small gravel access road to Payne's Dairy Road. Each building would have an eight foot by eight foot footprint and be located approximately a hundred and thirty-three feet apart. Entire field and shotfall area will be located at least three hundred feet from all exterior property lines.
Seth, I need to make a correction. That fourteen seventy-four Payne's Dairy?
Yes, sir.
That's a house, and then it's got either a poultry hu- house behind it or a large shed.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions for me?
At this time, is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of or against? If you would, if you'd step forward one at a time and come up and state your name, please.
I'm Jimmy Gray, five-two-seven New Sterling Road, Stony Point, North Carolina. I'm a partner in Gray Area Farms, I mean, Gray House Farms and Gray Area Land LLC, both. Thank you for your consideration on this. I already have a relationship with the Alexander County landfill. We have two test wells on our property as we speak. As Mr. Seth here has spoken, the, uh, the front side of this property has been clear-cut. I'm meeting to do site prep for replanting it tomorrow morning at eight o'clock. I'm in favor of this for many reasons. I'm a farmer. One farmer in the United States feeds a hundred and fifty people. We need connection to other people. So this is similar to a lot of other things we do to try to have that good rapport with our neighbors. My wife and I have hosted a youth day at our farm for twenty years. Back in oh-seven, we did a forestry management field day over in Iredle County. We attended county fairs, which we thoroughly enjoyed coming to the Alexander County Fair, and we missed that, to have the connection with people. This one checks the box also. A fine group of gentlemen and a couple ladies, I think, are also in this organization that want to operate at this place, our property, to experience the great outdoors and have outside recreation. I've also spoke to, uh, four-H extension shooting sports. They would love to have a facility such as this to use. And even though we haven't finalized the contract, because this is the first step, we're strongly encouraging them to make available to the four-H clubs to do shotgun, uh, on this facility. So give back to the community, and we, we, uh, want to be a good neighbor to everyone. Your question about fourteen forty-seven is my fine neighbor, Miss Sally Poole. If you look on Carl Fox Road, the two residences, two-twenty-two and four-forty-four, two-twenty-two is a burnout house, four-forty-four was a mobile home that's no longer there. So we are, have a great tremendous different, distance, uh, from, uh, a lot of the county residences. This is a private group. Many of the members are in your, uh, in the crowd today. It's not like a public business where they're going to be open every afternoon, shooting going on every afternoon. It's whatever they set their, uh, you know, shooting times as. I'm not a member of their group. We're going to work out a lease, and, uh, they will be the ones participating. Like I said, it's not going to be an open business. They're not selling anything there. There will be no firearms, other than shotguns only. The other thing that checks the box for me is our property, almost two hundred and fifty-five acres, other than the pond there, is pretty much all pine trees. I also consider myself a wildlife manager, and this gives me an open area that wildlife could benefit from also. So that's another thing that just sort of appeals to me about this. You have any questions for me?
I'm, I have a question about what it is or why it is, but who is the group that's going to be doing it?
It's the, uh, and Eric can-
The Hickory Skeet Club.
What I know about them is that they had a property about nineteen sixty that they started having their club on, and as Hickory grew and grew and grew and grew, it came up right up to them, and then the property changed hands, and the new owner said, "No more."
Typically, how many days a week do you shoot, and how many hours, or is there?
Excuse me. Yes, sir. If you're going to speak, you will need to be sworn in, sir, please. You just, you'll have to, you'll have to be sworn in, okay?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this manner is the whole truth?
Yes.
State your name, please.
Eric Hickey. I live in Hickory, thirty-eight twenty-eight Jimmy Place, Hickory, North Carolina. Uh, I'm the treasurer of the Hickory Skeet Club, uh, have been for the last fifteen years. Uh, as Mr. Gray stated, we started in nineteen sixties on a plot of land west of the Catawba Valley Mall. Uh, and over the years, one of the members owned that land, allowed us to use it. Uh, he since passed, uh, the land was sold. So for the last twelve months or so, we've been searching diligently for another place to relocate. And one of our members contacted Mr. Gray, so our conversations have gone from there. The club itself, a little over a hundred members total. Uh, I'd say twenty percent, uh, twenty-five percent are regular shooters. Typically, it's Thursday afternoons and Saturdays are, are the biggest times. We've got probably, of the hundred members or so, uh, twenty-five members are, uh, they travel to state shoots, outside, uh, national shoots. The rest of us are pretty much recreational, uh, shooters. Uh, just like to get out to camaraderie, continue the skeet shooting. Uh, we try to bring some, some younger members in. Uh, we have, uh, a couple of, uh, female shooters that participate. One is at, uh, shooting at the national levels as well. Um, so again, want, just wanting to continue the, um, the camaraderie, the skeet shooting, and trying to find a, a place that we can, um, we can set up and, and have a field. And as Mr. Gray was saying, help with the community, the, uh, the four-H, that'd be great. Uh, definitely willing to, to work with them.
So is your club then open for new membership, or?
The membership is, you must know someone who is a member, so that, that's our way of, of, I guess, I don't want to say screening, but just verifying that we've got good people joining the club. So it would be open for additional members, but again, it's a, a current member would have to bring that person in and vouch for them, and then become their mentor in terms of training, et cetera, at the field.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to mention, they do have, just because they're Hickory Skeet Club, they have several members that are residences of Alexander County.
Anyone else? If you would, sir, please come forward.
I, uh, wrote a letter on if you want to read it, or do you want to read it, or?
If you'd like to, sir, you can read it, then you can place it in, then you can place it into evidence.
Okay.
That's basically what we say. But before you start speaking, if you would, please state your name and, and where you live.
Robert Hammer Schmidt, and, uh, I live in Newton, but, uh, that's my property with the two chicken houses on it. It's just to the east there. Okay, anybody? In response to the letter dated December thirty-first, in our telephone conversation on Friday, October ninth, we would like to strongly object to the skeet shooting range so close to a proximity of a property located on fifteen oh-four Payne's Dairy Road. We purchased this property and are planning to build a primary residence there. Currently, we have a recreational area set up and are enjoying the peace and quiet of country living. If the skeet shooting range is allowed to go forward, we could not build our house out there, nor could we sell it to someone else to do the same. Due to the noise, we drastically diminished the property value. So anyway, they, they chopped down all the trees, and there's a valley goes right up there, so the, and you're basically pointing there, pointing the skeet shooting guns, you know, shotguns right up the valley there, so. Uh, we have a, oh, like I said, recreational area just to the west of those chicken coops there, and it's real quiet back there, but it won't be after this, so. I know people like to go skeet shooting, but, uh, it's kind of, it changes my plans a little bit.
If you'd like to, if you would, sir, just give one of those to the clerk, and then she'll take care of the rest of us having it. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Approximately from the diagram of this skeet shooting field itself down there, about how far is your?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know how far it is. I'm trying to think. Is my property like, you know, like a thousand feet, so. You know, from top to bottom, so probably from the two thousand feet.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here that would like to speak? Do you have another statement? Okay.
To give you, to give you a slight scale, I have a road that comes in right above fourteen seventy-four and goes down to that pond. If I enter there and go down to the dam of the pond, which is just almost parallel to that, it's point nine-five miles. Now, there is a turn there. I know it's not as the bird flies, but that does give you sort of a reference on distance. It's point nine-five miles from Payne Dairy Road down that stream road to the dam of the pond, which is the southern, pretty much the southern southwest border.
Anyone have anything else? Oh, excuse me.
Yes, sir, Mr. Harris. I just want to reiterate to the board that there are other reasonable conditions you could place on this to lessen the impact of the noise, such as changing the hours of operation, limiting the days of operation. Uh, you could, the ordinance does say an earth and burn could be put up, you know, to deaden the noise. Um, so there are other options that are in the, uh, in the section from the zoning ordinance that you could pull from. So in other words, you can go beyond my recommended conditions on here. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any commissioner have anything else they'd like to say? At this time, I, uh, request, ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion and we close the public hearing on conditional use permit twenty dash two, shooting range skeet field, Gray Area Land LLC.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, and second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, motion carries. Gentlemen?
Well, uh, when one considers the questions, does the use meet the requirements set forth in the statutes? Yes. Will adversely affect the health or safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use? Excluding sound, I guess that would be yes. And number three, I would see no apparent risk of injurious activity or damage to property. However, I certainly understand the gentleman's concerns over building a house, but if the information there is correct, we're somewhere between, I guess, a half a mile and three-quarters of a mile away. I long stand on the thought of it's not my right to tell someone what they can do with their own property if they're doing so legally. And I'll be quiet.
Anyone else? I would entertain a motion at this time, then, and reminding, uh, our commissioners, when you make this motion, that, uh, to make sure that the, uh, condition, uh, to read the condition listed in the report, make sure that we have those in there and involved, so that we'll know what the conditions of them are. The only question that I would have at this time is the timeframe, seven AM to seven PM, based on, uh, they say no artificial lighting, and so it would seem to me that when they have a time change, that, it would be dark at seven PM. So that would be one consideration that I would have as far as the time is concerned, that it not be there, and I totally understand where everybody's coming from.
Well, Mr. Vice Chairman Yoder, please, sir, I'd like to add to your thought there that, um, seven AM might be a tad early, too, on someone, uh, who's lying in the bed, and you got a whole lot of shotgun blasts going on. I'm all for doing it, but I think that, you know, that, that might be a bit early, too.
You know. That's all. I might do it on rapid hunt, however, but, uh, you know. I mean, what are your thoughts, and the rest of these thoughts? What do y'all think?
I'm considering the idea of an eight AM up to dusk or seven PM, whichever of the two comes first.
Which either comes first, based on the time of, of, uh, daylight savings time in winter and spring months. That's, that's sort of the way I was thinking, you know? I mean.
Your most hunting regulations that you have are, you know, daylight to dusk.
Daylight to dusk, yeah.
Basically.
Yes, excuse me. Was anybody, we entertain a motion at this time, then, from the board.
Make a motion that we, um, approve the conditional use permit twenty dash two in regards to the Payne's Dairy Road with the additional stipulations of eight AM as a starting of first gunfire, and then the earlier of dusk or seven PM.
Second.
Okay, uh, uh, I'd like to also make sure, I'm going to, I'm going to, uh, 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 that what you recommended there was the existing conditions that are already in there. It was the exception of changing the one, so, so that everybody will understand what we're doing here. The way he said it was the, the skeet shooting range must utilize steel shot and not use lead-based ammunition. Entire field and shotfall area must be located three hundred feet from all exterior property lines. The ru- land around the shooting field be replanted in trees, and that the time of operation will be from sunup at eight AM and to dusk or seven PM, which either comes first. No artificial lighting shall be permitted, shall be limited to shotguns only. No artificial lighting shall be permitted, shall be limited to shotguns only. No small bore or four, or four, or full bore rifles or pistols shall be permitted. And that is what I understand that the motion consisted of under the staff's recommendations. And that's what we will be discussing. And at this time, I think there's also a second's been made to this. Mr. Commissioner Peel made the second. And is there any other discussion? There's not any. All those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise. The motion case. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number six, Western Piedmont Sister Cities Association. I'd like to call on Lori Street, the volunteer. Excuse me.
Number five.
Number five.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. I was on a roll there, okay? Resolution to approve financing terms and documents, twenty twenty law enforcement and detention center refinancing. Mr. Bob Jessup, the attorney for Sanford-Holzhouser Law Group.
Good evening, Mr. Yoder, members of the board. I'm Bob Jessup. I'm a lawyer with the firm Sanford-Holzhouser. Our office is in Carboro and it's been our pleasure to work as the special outside counsel for the county in connection with the refinancing of the county's existing loan that helped pay for the law enforcement and detention center. We're asking the board tonight to consider the final formal step from the board in connection with this financing. It's a resolution that will formally approve the financing proposal from Truist. That was the preferred choice of staff of the proposals that were received to approve the forms of the financing documents as substantially final and authorizing the staff to complete the closing. If the board approves the resolution tonight, we're well underway to have that loan closed on October twenty-two. The refinancing will save the county approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars in present value savings. The action we're asking the board to take is to approve the resolution in the form presented. I'd be happy to answer any questions either about the resolution or any other aspect of the financing.
As long as it saves money.
You don't have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar option, do you?
Well, your interest rate is one point one. We, I think you're, that's worth taking.
Gentlemen, you've had the opportunity to look over the resolution. And it's time I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve financing terms and documents, twenty twenty law enforcement and detention center refinancing project as stated in the book.
Second to motion.
Motion's made and second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, you can raise your right hand. Those opposed likewise.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate having had the opportunity to work on this with, with county staff and it's been proceeded in a very, a very smooth and non, hasn't been a lot of muss and fuss to it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your assistance in this matter. Item number six, Western Piedmont Sister Cities Association, Lori Street, volunteer.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lori Street. I'm a longtime resident of Alexander County. And I'm here today on behalf of Western Piedmont Sister Cities Association, of which Alexander County is already a member municipality. To briefly describe what Sister Cities does is there is a city in the United States that partners with a city in a foreign country. It's usually because of geographical, cultural, economic similarities. And we learn from each other and, and help each other and share experiences together. The Western Piedmont Sister Cities is made up of the counties in the uniform, of which Alexander County is one. And our sister city is actually a region as well. It's called Altenberger Land and sometimes people refer to it as the city of Altenberg. So I'm here today to share with you that each member municipality is entitled to two representatives. Each representative is to be an elected official or their designee. And I'm here to request that I be made your designee and to encourage you to additionally select a representative, a second representative or designee to ensure the proper number of representatives for voting on matters of business with Western Piedmont Sister Cities and for the enjoyment. So each municipality is entitled to two representatives. Do you have any questions for me?
No. I can't remember the last one that we had that sort of, that was our representative that was on the Sister Cities. It was.
Carl Lentz.
Yes, and another one.
Dwight Shook has served in the past.
Dwight Shook, yes.
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to think of.
And there are two year, it's two-year terms and Dwight Shook's term expired. And Carl Lentz moved out of the county. So therefore you are eligible to replace him and to get your second representative. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, do we need to take action on that as, as appointing her as? Right, okay. All right. This one, make sure. All right. Item number eight has been, we didn't agree with that one. Number nine, water project progress update.
Number seven.
Number seven.
Where am I going at here so fast? I already checked it off, okay? Calhoun-Landon Lakes, RC&amp;D, Firewise USA, Christina Newhouse and David Huffman.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for having me today.
Yes.
I didn't need these brochures for you on the table as well as my business cards. I asked you to talk to you about two programs today, but I'm going to start off with Firewise and my work that I'm doing here with the North Carolina, North Carolina Forest Service County Ranger, David Huffman. So my name is Christina Newhouse. I'm with Carolina Land and Lakes RC&amp;D. We are the Resource and Conservation Development Council. We cover seven areas. Alexander County is one of the areas that we cover. What we've been, we've been contracted by the U.S. Forest Service and the North Carolina Forest Service to help them implement the Firewise USA program all along the western side of North Carolina. And this is our coverage area where we currently have certified Firewise communities. Our number one goal is to reduce wildfire risk and structure loss to properties and communities. So we address high-risk private lands along the U.S. Forest Service lands or ten miles up to that. We encourage communities to become official Firewise communities and maintain their status. And we educate individual residents on mitigation efforts that can help in reducing their risk of structure loss in the event of a wildfire. I will also add that it's not just wildfire that we talk about when we talk about structure loss. I am also a firefighter and our number one goal is the protection of life and property. And the work that we do with residential communities also addresses structure-to-structure fire damage that can occur. We hold mitigation demos and remove hazardous fuels and improve community awareness. We've done several events on, on state parks land as well as private lands to introduce the positive effects of prescribed burning and the reduction of hazardous fuels on the landscape. So that's just a little bit of the work that we've been doing in the region over the last year and a half. Next slide, please. My contact here with the North Carolina Forest Service is our, the Alexander County Ranger, which is David Huffman here. He's going to go over the forest plan budget with you guys when I'm finished. And he is the liaison that I work with when I'm working with residential communities and the North Carolina Forest Service. This is a NFPA program, which is the National Fire Protection Agency program, so it's nationally recognized. This is also the same NFPA that writes the codes and standards for firefighters and how, how we protect ourselves and the people that we serve on a national level. So we work on teaching people how to adapt to living with wildfire and encourage neighbors to work together to take action now to prevent losses. And then we educate communities on how to prepare their home to help prevent these losses. So ways that we do that is we start addressing issues like what are the types of fuels and what are your, your risks and how to mitigate these risks. We talk about weather and what that impact can be. So this year, we're looking at a very dry fall. And so we have an expectation that we might have a potential for quite about a fire on the ground and how we can work with these residents to help them protect themselves. And then we also address terrain and how slopes can impact the spread of fire and how it can impact an individual or an entire community, as well as how the fire department accesses these lands with one-way, one-out, one-way out and the lack of water accessibility that they have on these, on these communities. We also talk about what it is and how you should know what your fire season is. For here, you know, fall and spring is the highest concentration of wildfire season here, which a lot of folks aren't aware of. So we try to address things like controlled burning during that time and some of the preventions that they can use to reduce their risk. So one of the primary things that we focus on is the home ignition zone, which is the immediate zone, which is zero to five feet around the residence. You don't have to be in a very dense wooded area to practice these types of mitigation efforts. We also talk about the intermediate zone and the extended zone and the different practices that you can do all the way up to a hundred feet, up to a hundred feet around your property and how that there are actual cost share funds that are available through the North Carolina Forest Service to help with some of that mitigation work up to that hundred foot around that home or that community piece of land. And I've given you guys some flyers here that you can take home with you that kind of gets into more detail about that. We also work with residents so they understand what their risk is and how to prevent within that zero to five-foot zone by taking specific measures like keeping leaves out from underneath their decks and in their gutters and how to screen things, how to use non-flammable fencing or wood that is attached to their home, the type of roofing that they use, as well as covering different types of vents where embers have access to get into their home to spread fire to cause structure loss. Here's an example of a project that we worked with multiple agencies besides the North Carolina Forest Service and the U.S. Forest Service to do mitigation work around a home. As you can see here, we have rhododendron that's growing all the way up to the, to the house itself, which is a highly flammable plant. And that's one of the other things that we talk about is the different types of landscaping plants that people put around their home and how some of them have a higher fire rating than others and what it looks like when you clear that land and how you have less likelihood of fire spread going up into the, up into the residence. And so as we expand, we start to get more into what those landscaping measures are and how you can use hardscape materials such as gravel or stone or keep vegetation from accroaching on power lines, chimneys or the home itself. The other thing that we really talk to residents about is keeping that address clearly marked so that emergency services can find their home. So we're not just talking about the fire service, but we're also talking about EMS, having access to that piece of property and being able to locate the residence at any time of emergency. Here's another example of a home that we did where you can see that the leaves in this case were actually like a foot and a half deep all the way up into the, to the structure of the home, which was going to make it an extreme fire hazard. And so we did some mitigation work to, to help that, that resident clear that up for them. When we talk with community members, we also talk about different types of tree pruning techniques and how to have proper spacing to allow for firefighting equipment to get through. So if you have a driveway that doesn't have that fourteen-foot access to it, you know, engines can't get inside to help, help prevent that loss. And then once again, back into that extended zone, keeping trees pruned at least ten feet off the ground, rhododendron and mountain laurel in small packets and removing heavy fuel accumulations around the property. And this is another example of some of the techniques that we use. And this is really to demonstrate what it is to have a mild to moderate slope and how fast fire can climb on steep terrain and how you should have proper spacing techniques. So one of the things that Carolina Land and Lakes does is go out to communities and let them know how they can become Firewise. You only need to have eight residents in a community that want to participate in the program to become eligible. I can always get into great detail about that at another time and working with that community directly and what the requirements are, but it's a very simple process. And most people do a lot of the volunteer hours that are required for the program just by raking leaves around their home or cutting their own grass. So it's very achievable for communities. And, and we're hoping that in the future that the, the insurance agencies of the state of North Carolina actually reduce homeowners insurance rates like they do in California and other states for being a Firewise community. And so one of the other ways that we go ahead and get that, get that, that assessment, that going is, is that we, the community members can request a wildfire risk assessment from their North Carolina Forest Service Ranger right here, David Huffman. And essentially what they do is that there's a scoring system and they go through, walk around the property with the homeowner and let them know what some of the mitigation efforts are that can be done around that property and what their score is. And then making recommendations in the, in the, in the form of an assessment of the activities that they can do around their home to reduce their risk. And this is at no cost to the resident or the community involved. So recently, the North Carolina Forest Service just did over sixty assessments for a fifteen-hundred home community and there was no charge to the residents for those assessments. This also allows you to have access to funding. And this isn't just residential communities. We're also talking about some property here in Alexander County that may be able to access some of these funds for some mitigation work. And so if you work directly with your, with your forest ranger, you can find out what those funds are and how they're available to you. All right. On that note, I'm going to go ahead. Actually, if you don't mind, David, can I just do the energy cap thing real quick? So that's what I have to say about Firewise. Does anybody have any questions for me about the Firewise USA program?
Sounds like a good program. You say if someone's interested, they just contact y'all? Or do you go through and identify with the forest ranger at risk areas?
We do both. So I, I've come out to Alexander County recently in the last several months and met with the Taylorsville County Manager. We went out and we looked at some communities that may, may pose a little bit of a risk or may be interested in participating in the Firewise program. So we have done some identification. We also looked at a piece of property on Wilkes-Barre Highway that borders up to the Norwood community that maybe, that's owned by the town, that was donated some years back, that may be eligible for some mechanical mitigation work. And David and I are working on that now and getting that conversation started. Basically, we're looking once again at the eligibility of that zero to a hundred foot from the residence. So the mechanical mitigation work necessarily wouldn't encompass that ten-acre piece of property. However, it would address that hundred-foot designation from that residential structure. And that's really what we're looking at. You know, any lands that are, you know, butt up to U.S. Forest Service land too, we're, we're also working on multiple fronts to extend the conservation projects, programs that the U.S. Forest Service is doing on those lands onto private lands. And we hope to start doing that very shortly. But as far as actually setting up the time, anyone can contact me directly. I can get into more detailed information about what Firewise is or they can go directly to David Huffman.
Okay, thank you.
But the more assessments that we get on the ground is better for the community. And there is a bigger picture that we are looking at in terms of the Firewise program and what the RC&amp;D Conservation Development Councils do in the region is really looking at communities becoming fire-adapted. So even if you don't have multiple Firewise certified communities in your property, if the county or the town is making an effort to address some of the, the mitigation work and risk that they have for structure loss, we can start discussing actually the county becoming a fire-adapted community or a county. becoming a fire-adapted community or a county.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I hope I answered your question appropriately. Okay. Anybody else? No? Okay. So real briefly, another program that Carolina Land and Lakes is is working here in this area works with rural businesses. So all the businesses here in Alexander County are considered eligible for this program as well as farms. So it is a cost-share assistance program that works on renewable energy and energy efficiency programs here in the in the area. We recently just had a successful program working with Lenny, and Lenny's not here right now, for Campbell's Blueberry Farm, which is also in Alexander County, where they were able to benefit from this cost-share assistance program. It's a it's called Energy Cap, and it's it's there's three now, we have three different cost shares that are stackable. One is the Rural Energy for America Program, which is a federal grant, which gives people 25% off the total project cost for renewable energy or energy efficiency project. That covers rural, small business, and farms. So that includes solar PV projects. So you can get a big chunk covered there. We also have two other grants that are stackable with that. One is through ADFP, and the other one is through Tobacco Trust Fund. One covers 25% total project costs, and the other one covers 25% of the total equipment cost minus sales tax because farms are sales tax exempt. And so we're really working on getting those conservation practices on the ground here in the region and how to benefit farms and small businesses to reduce their energy costs and footprint. And I gave you some information here. There's a there's a card that's available, and it's not just solar PV. If people want to do lighting upgrades from fluorescents to LEDs, or they want to do insulation upgrades, anything that's going to be energy efficient are things that we can discuss to find out if they're eligible for some of these cost shares. So they could actually get up to 40% to 60% of the total project cost covered at no cost to them.
That's pretty good.
Sounds good.
Yeah, it is good. We need to get people on board. It's great. It's a great way for them to save money. So David's going to go up and and talk about the the Forest Service Plan Budget at this time. And I wanted to thank you all for your your time this evening.
We're going to talk about budget. We're not going to really talk about budget. So but I won't take up a lot of your time. So I met you folks about 15 months ago as the initial, the new county ranger here in Alexander County. Thanks for having me. What I did bring tonight is some accomplishments that we have been working on. We'll talk about budget a later date when our budgets do come out because we we operate on fiscal year, so maybe right now is not a good time to work on it. But we'll be working with Mr. Gillespie and Mr. French on that later and everything. So on the front page, you see our summary of our fires that we had in Alexander County. The column that you see that's dated in the white 2019, that is fall of 2019. That is a fall fire season that Ms. Newhouse spoke about. You can see the number of fires that had a car there, debris burning being our number one cause of fires, machinery reuse. We're in a farm, you know, we're a farming county. So you're going to have machinery causing some fires, some sort combines and different things like that. A few kids. We teach at schools not to play with matches. We do all we can, but it happens every year. So a couple, you know, underage folks, and then every once in a while, somebody tosses out a cigarette. You'll notice in 2020, the green section, wow, 11 fires so far. It's been wet, folks. It's not it's not rocket science for, you know, spring of 2020. We were very wet in the spring, but we were out there. We did have a few fires. But like I say, we were doing our best. The thing that I am proud of in Alexander County that we keep our numbers low. If you'll look at that average acreage, most of our fires are less than a quarter acre. That's our average, quarter of an acre fire. So our fires, lots from our county folks, that y'all help out, which I am also a volunteer, greatly appreciate all their work and everything that they're budgeting that they do. And like I said, in the spring, tenths of an acre. That means we're basically getting to the fires quickly, quick response. The back page is our forest management. These are some forest management numbers, and this is what we would call our rainbow sheet. This is our accomplishment sheet. As a ranger here at about 18, 19 months, the red shows that I have room for improvement. I'm not making straight As, which is the green. I'm not making all Bs, which are the yellow, the Bs. I do have room for improvement, but as a, like I say, less than two years under my belt, I've got room for improvement. And these will be, these are my 19, 20 FM goals. We're doing a lot of tree harvesting here in Alexander County, which is shows up underneath your, that shows up underneath your, where it's called basically FPG inspections and Active Sites. We harvested 1,210 acres in fiscal year 1920 of timber in Alexander County. But conversely, the numbers sometimes are, we planted back 149 acres back into trees. Plus, we've been working on trying to get a lot of management plans, teaching folks about their timber, regeneration plans, getting folks to replant those trees, stewardship plans, like I say, working with the wildlife, quality of life, and different things going forward. Any questions? Like I say, just thought we would bring this back to you since, like I say, I'm 18, 19 months on the job, got room for improvement. Any questions or any comments for me?
It's always good to keep those forest fires down to a low number.
Yeah.
And that quick response makes a difference.
My predecessor, Mr. Walters, was great. I mean, really worked hard with the Firewise program. We are a smaller county compared to what you maybe see on the news. Wilkesboro has several communities that are Firewise communities. Caldwell County has Firewise communities. But if we bring in enough houses, if we bring in enough individuals, we can also be a fire-safe community, and that's what we like for Alexander to have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? And my card's there. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call anytime. I'm I'm work with you guys and work for you guys. Like I said, my first day here, I'm here to work for citizens of Alexander County. So feel free to give me a call.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Item number nine, Water Project Progress Update. RJ Mosley with McGill and Associates.
Good evening, Commissioner Yoder and the rest of the members. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. I am RJ Mosley with McGill. We're happy to report to you this evening on the progress of the 2018 Water Project, as it was dubbed early on. If you'll recall, that's a project that did start about that timeframe in 2018 with the North Carolina Department of Water Infrastructure. And it is a project to extend water lines, create a few loops within your distribution system all throughout the county. The map that you've got there in front of you is our latest update for the progress of construction progress, that is, for those projects. You'll notice there a number of those areas, the different areas in the map are now 100% complete. The focus of the work over the last 60 days or so has primarily been in the southern areas. That's down around Poly Bowman area. They've started in on B and T Lane, have completed a section, almost a second section on Tigtown Road. And then they'll have a little bit more to do in B and T and over on Eckerd Ridge Road to finish that job up. As of October the 2nd, the date of the map there, the work was about 86% complete. And the with the additional pipe that they got in last week, which is not represented here, it's about another about another 2% to 3% in the ground, ready for ready for testing and certification. The project overall is running a little behind schedule just with the early difficulties in high production in the Wittenberg Springs neighborhood, which was added to the project late. And that area was one that just, it's a developed area, highly congested neighborhood, a lot of existing utilities. And so getting that done first, because it was the most critical area with with main breaks, that that took up a good bit of time, more than they had anticipated early on. But we are coming to the short roads now. Progress has been steadily progressing, and the work, to our knowledge, has has gone on without too many interruptions or or issues for citizens in the county. Any any questions at all about the current construction project?
Everything's going on pretty well.
Certainly. So it's taken a step beyond that since this project got really good unit prices on bid day back in late 2019, I guess it was, or mid 2019. The county and McGill have been working together, and as you guys are aware, back in May, voted to add some additional areas to this project, potentially, most likely by change order. We have recently permitted those additional extensions, and so there are a few more areas that will be hopefully added to that contract, assuming all goes well in those final negotiations with the contractor. But we do now have in hand the permits that are necessary for for that work to proceed. So before too long, you'll hear a little bit more about how that project area and that that good pricing that you've gotten will be able to be utilized to extend this project a little further.
Very good.
Anything at all? Okay.
Good job. A lot of 100%.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of 100%, so that's good. You know, appreciate your work.
A lot of 100%, yes. Item number 10, Resolution for North Carolina Commerce Building Reuse Grant Application. Mr. David Isahora, CEDC Executive Director.
Thank you, Mr. Yoder. Commissioners, as noted, this is a resolution for a North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Grant Application. And as part of the process, this resolution has to be adopted by the board. And for the purpose of explanation, I will point out that at this point in the process, we can't name the company. That's why it's referred to as Project Steeplechase. And I would also point out to you that as I read this resolution, there's a little bit of minor wording correction in the second paragraph. So with that, I would like to read the resolution for the record. Alexander County Resolution, Application for North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Funds for Project Steeplechase. Whereas, Alexander County Board of Commissioners has indicated its desire to assist in economic development efforts for business and industry within Alexander County. Whereas, the board fully supports the proposed renovation plan by Project Steeplechase, which will result in the renovation of existing industrial space and will create a minimum of 10 new jobs for Alexander County. And whereas, the board wishes the county to pursue a formal application for building reuse funds in the amount of $125,000 from the North Carolina Department of Commerce. And whereas, the board certifies it will provide up to $6,250, representing 5% match required for the final grant award amount, and also certifies the county will adhere to all other requirements of the North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Grant Fund. Now therefore be resolved by Alexander County Board of Commissioners that Alexander County authorizes a formal application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce Building Reuse Grants Program in order to provide assistance to benefit Project Steeplechase. This resolution effective upon its adoption this 12th day of October 2020. Two other things that I would also point out to you is that the grant allows us to apply for up to $125,000. It's been my recent experience that they have not been awarding the full amounts on these grants. So if the grant amount is less than $125,000, the county match will also be less than 100, I mean, will be less than $6,250, but it'll stay at 5% of whatever the grant amount is. This is an important project. The owner of this business is looking at an investment into his building of roughly, well, in excess of $500,000 for repairs that absolutely are critical to the continuation of his business. So I am I'm very hopeful that we'll get as much of this $125,000 as is possible. This full application is due on October 22nd, and the awards will be announced in December. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, if you have any. And I would ask you to adopt this resolution tonight.
Very good. 10 new jobs, you know, more jobs the better.
Every few count.
That's exactly right. Did I entertain a motion at this time on the resolution?
Make a motion to adopt a resolution, Project Steeplechase.
Motion's made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's made and second. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, motion case.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. You're welcome. Item number 11, COVID-18 Update. This time we'll call on Leanne Westin, Health and Human Services Director.
It's going to be me and Doug tonight.
I was going to say, I just said you and Doug and Mr. French.
I I'm saving other stuff for day-to-day and those wonderful phone calls. We we are staying very busy. I did prepare you slides, and I waited till the last minute to try to keep them accurate because this is a moving target, as you know. We have 596 cases. The state website is, I think, one time in the last month had the exact numbers we have, but we've already talked about that discrepancy. Our numbers are accurate based on confirmed cases. We have eight deaths, which we are very greed for, and our condolences go out to those families. We have three hospitalized, 56 still quarantined, and 529 recovered. I know last time we talked about seeing it on a graph. So the next slide will show you that trajectory, and you'll see that we, you know, went drastically up from May to July. August, we were coming down, but you see that ticking back up. Now, for this month, we currently have, 10 days into this month, we have 37 positive cases this month. If we continue that trajectory, we'll come back down. That's a little over 111. You know, a lot of things can change, though, but that's kind of where we're at. I I like to see it so you can kind of see exactly where we're at. And then I thought you might be interested in our school since school went back in. Lots of concerns. We've we've watched this very closely. We've worked very close with the school system. We're working with them. I know the school board is going to have a proposal to come about add more days tomorrow at their board meeting. So we continue to work very closely with them. But I think you'll see from this that they have done really well. You see one case in pre-K. You see students at eight. Through that whole graph, you see very low numbers. And of all those, there was only one linked case, which we were thrilled about. That's only one person actually passing that on to someone else around them. And we're tracking that daily, so. And then the next graph shows you hospitalized. Our hospital data is doing very well coming down, and even our deaths. I would like to encourage people to take their flu vaccine. We have started giving those, and we are doing Fridays, every Friday in October, a drive-through clinic at the Health Department from 1:00 to 3:00. We do ask that you call to get on the list. It just lets us get you in the computer, have everything ready, so it goes really quickly. We did over 50 this Friday. So with flu season coming upon us, we're already seeing stomach bugs, strep throats. We're getting into that scary time of year when you see lots of viruses anyway, and it's getting really hard to determine those risk factors because all of those illnesses have very similar fever, aching, not feeling well. So the more we can prevent, like the flu, the less confusion we'll have with, you know, is it a case of COVID? Any questions? Yes, sir.
You talked about the only one linked case and the good job that the school system's doing, and that's that's amazing. I'm not here to propose or argue the value of a mask. All right, I'm not not going to go down that stream. We all have our own opinion.
Yes.
But I am going to say, what I have found out as
But I am going to say, what I have found out, as I've worked with you and with Billy and with other people on COVID issues, when you start the contact tracing piece, the mask and the separation makes a world of difference for your organization.
It does.
So, I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, that stops a lot of, obviously, spread, but it also stops the process on people who have to be quarantined, people who have been exposed, and all those things. So thank you for all the great advice and leadership that you've offered our county, our school system, our school, and other people as well.
I have a great public health staff, and they have worked tirelessly. Billy and our communicable disease staff and nurses, even staff that historically don't, does not do contact tracing, have been trained to do contact tracing, so I appreciate that. I'll pass that along, because that's certainly more credit to them than myself, but it, they have done a marvelous job, and you're exactly right. If you keep that distance and wear that mask, you might prevent yourself from being quarantined for 10 or 14 days, depending on.
And that's worth it.
Yes, sir.
Leanne, has anyone tested positive in our county with both the flu and COVID?
That's a good question. Not that I'm aware of, I'd have to go back and triple-check that, but not that I'm aware of, at least this flu season. Now, when we first started this, we were at the end of flu season last year, and what we historically do when we're trying to rule out is we'll start with symptoms, of course, and we ask the person for their, you know, we try to make a preliminary diagnosis, and then we test for flu. If it's negative, then we may try, depending on their symptoms, we may do a strep test, and then we will do COVID. So, and sometimes we do do both, if we're not sure, or if, you know, you can have false negatives with everything, too. So, you know, some of that has to go on their symptoms and their presentation, their risk factors, so, but not, not that I'm aware of. I'm sure it will happen.
Do we have any flu cases in the county yet?
Not that I'm aware of yet either. I know we've, I know we've had stomach bugs and strep.
I'm just curious how that would affect someone, that's why I was asking.
I bet there'll be a sick person. I would not want to be that person. I definitely plan to take my flu vaccine, and needed to already, but time has gotten away. We have actually scheduled to do flu vaccines out and about in the community, as well as we always do, and trying to really encourage that. And I know masks are hard, because it's hard to breathe in them, but they do make a difference, so. And I don't know if Doug has anything to add, as far as personal protective equipment? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to, real quick, go over personal protective equipment, we're still pretty good at. In the last couple meetings, we've talked about gowns, and isolation gowns. We have found a company that's out of Hickory that has actually been good to work with, a couple of their employees are Alexander County residents, and then they had called me and talked to me about it. Gloves, gowns, and everything. The only thing we're seeing right now is, of course, we've seen an increase in prices on everything. Gloves went up over 120% now, and that's something that we have to deal with, and that's something that we are trying to look at, other distribution areas and stuff like that. We're seeing a lot of cases, well, not seeing a lot of cases, but we have seen some cases in EMS itself, and we are working as diligently as we can to get them restaffed and get them feeling better so they come back. Our part-time has really stepped up, and we have quite a few with already 900 hours this year, so that's something that we have to watch out for.
Very good.
Appreciate it, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. French, do you have anything to add to that?
Mr. French, I have the appointments.
I've got you, absolutely. Item number 12, Board Appointments and Reappointments, Mr. Rick French, County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Sister Cities appoint Laurie Street for two years, the COG Unifor Home Consortium appoint Rick French for, reappoint Rick French for two years, and you'll have to, you'll end up appointing somebody else for the Sister Cities. I'm sorry, I have a sinus infection, so I'll avoid this going.
Jim, at this time, do I entertain a motion to approve the board appointments?
Make a motion that we approve board appointments as stated.
Throw a second.
Second.
Motion's made and second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand, those opposed likewise, motion carries, thank you very much. Mr. French, Budget Orders Amendments Number 17 through 24.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had emailed all of you the budget amendments. Do you have any questions with the amendments? I'll be glad to answer those.
I think we're, excuse me, I think they're good.
Do I entertain a motion, this time, reference the Budget Orders 17 through 24?
Make a motion to approve Budget Amendments 17 through 24, as stated.
Motion's made, is there a second? Motion's made and second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand, those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Mr. French, County Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one thing to let the public know about, the county did not receive the Part of Grant for the Port House Park, and we're gonna work on a plan to bring back to Commissioners with help, with assistance of the engineer at our November meeting. And I've got some things for closed session, but that's all I have.
Very good, sir, thank you. Item number, well, excuse me, new item number, Consent Agenda. Do I entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve Consent Agenda as stated in our booklet.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and second, any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand, those opposed likewise, the motion carries. At this time, we will go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143, Day 318.11, Section A, Paragraph 5 and 6, contractual and personnel. We will adjourn for the primary purpose of adjournment only, no action will be taken.
Make a motion, the Attorney General.
Thank you. Motion's made to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion made and second, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.[1781.21]